Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and Happy New Year. Welcome to our Thursday, January 10th, 2013 Town of Penfield Planning Board Meeting. We have several things on the agenda tonight. There is a preliminary final and, well, I guess there's three, two. And we'll listen to the applicants, we'll have questions from the board, and then we'll accept questions from the audience. Following the public hearing, we will deliberate in the back of the auditorium. All matters before us. Should you have any questions after this hearing, please feel free to call the Planning Department. Mark?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Our first public hearing tonight, Mark Grovans, P.E. of Fisher Associates, 135 Cockins Road, Rochester, New York, 14623, Tim Hortons USA. Requests under Article 3-3-10, 9-9-2, and 10-10-2 of the code, preliminary and final site plan, conditional use permit, and environmental protection overlay district permit, approval to allow the construction of 1,950 plus or minus square feet restaurant with associated site improvements on 1.03 acres at 2230 Penfield Road, to be known as 2230 Penfield Road. The properties now are formerly owned by L.E.M. Associates, LLC, is zoned LB and TF. Application number 13P-0001, SBL number 140.01-1-8.1. Go ahead, Mark.
Thank you. I am Mark Grovans with Fisher Associates. Much of this discussion this evening is going to be led by a representative of Tim Hortons, so I'd like to introduce Dan Blomowski.
Thanks for hearing our application again tonight. Again, my name is Dan Blomowski with Tim Hortons. We had made a design submission on November 30th in response to our November meeting with your board, and I just wanted to go over a few of the comments. I won't go item by item, but I'll just talk a little bit about our site plan and just kind of remind ourselves where we ended up at the meeting and the comments that were presented. We did receive the memo dated January 4th describing all the comments that you had received in one package. Again, this is a 1,950 square foot building with a drive-through facility. Again, we're looking for one curb cut, and I'll let Mark talk in a little bit about the DOT correspondence that we've had. Some of the comments that were presented, we had questions on, and like I said, I won't go item by item, but we talked a little bit last time about a cross-access agreement, and we have no issue at all with making that cross-access to the parking lot to the west of us. The existing cross-access that is right here provided on that existing site doesn't work. With our layout, obviously, it brings a cross-access in right behind our order station, which is right here for our drive-through lanes, so we thought that, in keeping with the idea of a true access management, is something you might see with a DOT roadway. You know, a front cross-access, we thought would make a lot of sense, and we have no problem doing that. We understand that the urgent care center prefers not to make that connection at this time. We could live with it, we could live without it, and again, we rely on the coordination between the board and our neighbor to decide what's best for that connection. And again, the only reason we couldn't make this connection work is because it comes right into our drive-through facility, which is critical for us as far as an operations standpoint There were a lot of engineering comments, and again, I'll let Mark discuss a little bit of what those were. Most of them are no problem, they're design-related. We have designed our storm drainage for this site in alignment with the green infrastructure idea. We have rain gardens designed in the front of the site and the rear of the site, and again, we've received some comments on minor design elements, which we can easily address. We did receive the memo from the Monroe County DPD requesting that we do coordinate our drainage and our erosion and sediment control with the town. That's no problem. We were notified of the DEC stream that comes through the property, which actually is the ditch, that's correct, right, Mark?
Yeah.
Which this is piped through our site through an underground vault, which goes here and then turns to the rear of the site, and that's all enclosed in underground piping, so we're not really impacting the stream itself, which is downstream of us and further upstream of the property. We also received the Monroe County Development Review Committee memo indicating that we have to make a design submittal for the backflow device to the Department of Health, as well as the DOT for our highway work permit for the driveway and all of our utility connections, any work being done within the state right-of-way. We do have a revised landscaping plan. One of the comments from your landscape reviewer was to enhance the site a little bit more, add some trees, and that was a little bit challenging, but we think we were able to do that. Do we have an updated one? Or is this it?
We have an updated one.
Okay.
It may have been emailed to the board as well.
What our concerns was, there's a lot of easements on the property. There's sewer easements coming along this side, there's utility connections that are coming up through the center of the site to the roadway, so we want to, the new landscape plan that we submitted, that'll be part of our revised design package, actually attempts to avoid, obviously, all of those underground utilities and put some more plantings along the property line to buffer the urgent care facility. We had submitted a letter requesting a modification to the hours of operation. I know in this district, in the LB district, the code says you can be open for business from 6:00 a.m. to 12:00 midnight, and our request, based on what the traffic counts are, and the traffic starts to pick up on the roadway around the 5:00 hour, we're asking, originally, we were asking for 24/7. We realize that's probably not necessary, but we are asking for an opening time of 5:00 a.m. as opposed to the 6:00 that's allowed by the code. We provided some DOT traffic counts to try and support that request. We did provide that to the Planning Department. I think the one major item that we wanted to talk about was the building style.
Campbell's Building?
We received the initial comments from the architectural reviewer from our initial I'll take you through real quickly the timeline and the different buildings that we have looked at. This was the document that was submitted by the town to us to consider as opposed to what our standard building looked like, which was this one in the bottom center of the original memo. We were asked to provide more of a residential style with a hipped roof shingle, like the building now has a hipped roof, and some of the existing buildings surrounding the property are also in that hipped roof residential design. So what we had proposed originally was this plan, which had the hipped roof, had a couple little peaks here, one in the front, one along the side, this is the parking lot side of the building, and this is what we had submitted originally. Again, here's a little bit better picture of that building from the corner. At the last meeting, it was requested that we raise that horizontal roof line, and that's the roof line that shields our mechanical equipment that's on the roof. It was requested that we raise that roof line to match the peak of these areas. So as part of this submittal package for this meeting, that's exactly what we did. We brought the roof line up to match the peaks. We were also, in the memo, it indicated that the town would like to see something more comparable to Grease or to the Gate Store. If you look at those particular buildings, that's exactly what those two buildings do, is they have the peak at the roof with the residential look. The Grease Store has a brick face, the Gate Store also. Now, what our new building does, it has a cement board siding, which I have with me. I know I presented them last time, and I passed them, and I could pass them around again if you'd like, anybody? Not necessary? Okay. Well, this brick that's on the Grease Store is the same material, it's a cement board siding. It's not a real brick, but it's, again, the cement board, we've gone to that, it's a more durable material. So we can make it look as like the standard colors that we show in our typical new prototype building with the Cafe Bake Shop brand that we're promoting, or we can modify that to be more of a brick style like the Grease Store, which is, again, we've had a good response on both, but we'd leave it up to the board to decide which one. I think we've met all the requests as far as making it the residential look and accenting the building, adding some stone to the base of the buildings, and again, we're just looking for more of a concrete direction as to which way we can go from here to provide the right With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mark just real quickly to talk about a couple minor engineering issues on the site layout. Thank you.
Dan mentioned the entrance onto Penfield Road. I did speak with a representative DOT about that and their comment they had on that, and we are able to revise that entrance to meet their requirements. Dan also mentioned the stream. This is not a DEC-regulated stream, it's a Class C stream. DEC only regulates a Class CT and higher, so I wanted you to be aware of that. Otherwise, I mean, there was a handful of engineering comments. If you have any specific comments that you'd like to talk about, I'm certainly willing to do that and would encourage you, if you have any comments on any of those matters, let me know. So at this point, I'll leave, I'll turn it over to you if you have any comments.
I guess you've answered most of the things that I had noted. Where were you planning on putting snow? Is there an area that is going to accommodate your snow removal?
Yeah, one of the reasons why we, along the corners of these parking lots, we have it squared off instead of the curved radius. One of the reasons why is we push snow into those corners, we do have the storage area in the back that we can use, and if at every point it comes a time where the snow is too heavy or too intense to move it around onsite or to plow it, we truck it away, we truck it off-site, and again, we try to do that all in anticipation of the storm. We, you know, it sometimes works, but if it ever does become too intense, we truck the snow off-site.
I don't have any other questions. Anyone else on the board? Doug?
You're good.
Anyone in the audience like to make comment? I guess you're good. I think the only other question that there was, and I see a note in my papers here on the reciprocal agreement for the cross-access, as long as we have something from you and from urgent care, that when development continues in that area, that'll be, have to be something that will be taken care of.
Yeah, we have no problem putting that in writing now for this cross here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Application number two, Ronald Rousher of Larson Engineers, 700 West Metro Park, Rochester, New York, 14623, and Michael Russell of the YMCA of Greater Rochester, requests under Article 9-2 of the code, preliminary and final site plan approval to allow the construction of a climbing tower, a dual zip line tower, and associated site improvements. These uses are authorized by a use variance granted on April 29th, 1963, on 24.79 plus or minus acres located at 1209 Bay Road, to be known as Bayview YMCA Day Camp Climbing Tower Improvements. The property is now or formerly owned by YMCA of Greater Rochester and is zoned R120 and CR2. Application number 13P-0002, SBL number 093.10-1-14.1. Thanks, Ron.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ron Rousher from Larson Engineers. Since there's some history on this particular application, I think it would be appropriate to have and introduce Mike Stevens, who is the Executive Director of the Bayview Branch, and he can explain both the past climbing tower and improvements and what's being proposed this evening. And then if there's any questions collectively, hopefully, we can address those. Thanks. Mike?
Good evening, everyone. I want to first thank you for hearing our application this evening, and before I get into that history, I just want to introduce a couple of the guests that I have with me as well. First, Christopher Marks, our Vice President of Properties, is here this evening. Mike Russell, our Chief Operating Officer for the YMCA of Greater Rochester, and then next to him, Adam Wallach, our Senior Director of Camping and Youth Services at the Bayview Branch. And before I get into tonight's application, I just want to first stop for a minute and recognize all the men and women from law enforcement and fire and first responders who responded to what was only described to me by the Fire Marshal, is a very large fire that was, you know, responded to, you know, in the best manner possible. So I certainly want to thank all of those individuals, and then thank the board and the officers here from the Town of Penfield for all of the support along the way, whether it was attending town hall meetings or helping us to raise additional funds. So certainly, I want to thank everyone involved. And then lastly, the community of Penfield, we've really been touched by the outpouring of support to react to the six-sided climbing tower that was burned down the day before our summer camp opened for the season. So we're just really blessed and touched to live in this community and have the support from six, seven-year-olds raising thousands of dollars to help, you know, put a new vision and a new dream in front of them for this coming summer. It was just something amazing that I'll always treasure to be a part of. And now into the project and a couple of the goals that we had. First, it was to serve the existing population of members and summer campers we have in a bigger, better, more meaningful way. That was our first goal. And the second was to take steps necessary to prevent a senseless act of vandalism like this from ever occurring again. So I would start out by saying that and saying that we have added additional security features to the plans, which I hope you've all had a chance to look at at this point, including security cameras, overnight lighting as well, to better illuminate what we're now referring to as our climbing campus at Camp Bayview. And next, I just wanted to take you through the three elements, and I'll start first with the top picture here, and that is a 35-foot-high grip of rock, rock climbing structure. It will come prefabricated onsite, it has what we call self-belay apparatus, it's actually safer than having actual humans belaying children up and down. The climbing tower will be able to, again, serve the same number of children climbing up and down as we could previously. Now, one of our big goals in this project was also making it accessible to all populations. We are very fortunate to serve a number of different populations and many individuals who utilize wheelchairs as well onsite, so you will see that this plan has ADA accessible pathways to get individuals to all of the different elements of the climbing campus that I'm going to describe tonight, including some of the bathrooms that were already onsite as well. So we're really looking to, again, serve individuals who are utilizing wheelchairs in a more meaningful way. The second piece of the campus is actually our sensory-friendly playground structure, and it has some climbing apparatus that is a part of that, what we call bouldering structures, along with some smaller challenges that create opportunities for team building, for youngsters and adults alike. They're all sensory-friendly because we do serve a large number of children who are on the autism spectrum each and every day of the summer. Another one of our very special signature programs at camp, where we're mainstreaming children who are on the autism spectrum. And then finally, the dual zip line. And this, again, this is an opportunity where in the past, you could only zip off of our old climbing tower if you had the ability to climb physically to the top, and so not a lot of six- or seven-year-olds would have that opportunity. And so in this model, we're proposing a staircase that would take the children and adults up to the top of this tower to be able to zip simultaneously, either, you know, the vision of a father and son, mother-daughter, caregiver and a boy in a wheelchair or a little girl in a wheelchair, we can make that vision a reality, and it's a reality that we feel is really lacking in Monroe County, and this will certainly be one of the first opportunities where we can create this. As I mentioned earlier, we took steps to create more flame-resistant structures or utilization of materials throughout, so we're looking to actually build all of the stairs with trucks decking and some things as opposed to utilizing wood, which our old structure was 100% wood and built on poles as well, and you can even see that the staircase itself is framed off of some I-beams, and so we're utilizing steel in this application as opposed to telephone poles. So that's really the presentation of the campus, and at this point, I would turn it over for any programmatic questions to myself and/or questions to Ron. I think we had a chance to respond to the, I believe it was eight initial questions that the board had, and again, so I would just turn it over. Thank you.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. To start with, have you discussed the plans with your neighbors to the north, the Baywind folks? Because I was out there today, and I noticed they are pretty close to you and your towers just to the north.
Sure. Great question, Doug. Yes, we certainly have. We have a wonderful relationship with the folks over at Baywind, they're actually the presenting sponsor of a lot of our active older adult programs, and one of the things that was already onsite is a gazebo that we actually erected for a number of the seniors to come over and enjoy watching the kids play and enjoy the climbing tower and the castle, and they also work on our community gardens and things as well. So we haven't taken them through the full plans and things, but yes, we have had discussions with Susan Bussi, the Executive Director.
Did they express any concerns about the size of the tower, the visibility of the towers, and maybe even the noise that might be generated from the children playing and, you know, using that facility? It's pretty close to people's windows right there at their...
No, no, we actually didn't have a discussion that was that in-depth with them, but we're building right on the existing site where the previous tower was, so we're not impeding or encroaching on them anymore than we would have in our previous plans. And the way that their facility is set up, much of the area that is directly adjacent to the climbing campus is actually their dining facilities and some of their recreational facilities, because we actually hold our board meetings in that building as well.
Okay. Is the tower about the same height as the previous tower? The new tower?
Yes, yes, if not a little bit shorter. And the orientation is a little bit changed as well, Doug. Where the actual climbing castle was itself, that is now where the dual-zip line platform is going to go. The actual rock wall itself is being kind of moved down the line to the south roughly 15 yards.
Any thoughts on screening the tower from the neighbors, or would that kind of defeat your visibility? I know you're trying to make sure it's visible also.
I would say not at this point, and one of the goals and one of the things that we seek to accomplish in a number of different deliverables is intergenerational programming, whether it's deliberate or it's unintentional. I would say this is more of an unintentional enjoyment for a number of the residents that get to sit outside and watch this on a daily basis for 50 days of the summer.
Okay. Is there any regular maintenance required for the structures, and do you anticipate vehicles having to get back there for any reason? And if so, how much, how often would that happen?
Well, any of the climbing structures are governed through the requirements of the ACCT climbing standards, which the Monroe County Health Department recognizes. Each year, any of our dual-zip line and our rock climbing tower will be inspected, and that wouldn't necessarily require a truck to be driving onsite. That's an individual who has those certifications and licenses and backgrounds to come in and check things like the steel airline cables that are belaying children up and down. Those need to be changed out each year, but that's something that can be done without the utilization of any heavy machinery.
All right. On the plan, I see some silt fence, and so I'm kind of wondering, is there any, maybe this is a question for Ron, but is there any earthwork that's going to be done around the structures on either end of the north or the south end? Or what's involved there?
Well, both of these will have foundations, so there will be concrete foundations, so excavation for the concrete, and subsoil will be removed from the site. Topsoil, we'd like to probably redistribute on the site. The only silt fence that we've really proposed is in this area down to the landing zone, and that's only because of the steep slopes proximity up in this area. It's pretty flat, not a lot going on there, so we don't anticipate a lot of site disturbance there. It probably wouldn't be necessary, except this little bit of area down there that we want to protect.
All right.
It's probably, Doug, it's probably overkill, but we put it there just to kind of give a visual.
Yeah, I didn't see any grating, so I was wondering, you know, how much grating you would have to do.
We're not, yeah, the grades won't really change, they'll stay pretty much as they are.
Okay.
Just remove the topsoil and put material in.
I see light poles, or what I guess are light poles on the plan, so I'm wondering, is this going to be operated at night also? And what are your hours, how late would you plan to be open if it's, if they are for nighttime use?
Sure. The vision is not to offer nighttime climbing. The light poles and the lighting that we're putting in are more to serve as, for security purposes, more than anything else, to provide a downward light, and I'm probably not using the correct engineering term here, but again, just to keep that space illuminated and also allow the security cameras and the additional security measures that we're taking to become effective and not useless.
I guess the only other question I had was, how does it operate in just safety? Because it's, I guess, I'll admit, I'm not familiar with zip lining, and I've never actually done it. I assume you've taken all the precautions, especially at the landing area there, and what, I mean, just what's involved with that, and how do you keep people safe at that end?
Sure. Well, one of the things that will certainly happen is there will never be users clipping themselves in and out of a zip line, whether it's at the access point that's here going up the stairs and going on. They're clipped into what I will call a trolley that sits over that cabling. They're then clipped in by a staff member there into a dual safety system where there's double clips, just like your seatbelt has two different straps around it. This type of pulley system would have two different clips onto a harness that's actually built out of seatbelt material. You know, then there are a system of commands and things that are used for the zip line to be clear, or the zip line area to be clear, and then the individual would be allowed to be released and zip down the zip line. At the other end of that zip line, there will also be another staff member there as well, who is ensuring that the actual path that the zip line is taking is free from any impediments at that point or any hazards. They would then zip down, and the actual technology we're using is called Zip Stop Technology, and this is something that a lot of zip lines are going to be changing in the coming years, but this has already been approved in New York State. It meets the ACCT standards that we've talked about before, and I'll go back to the example of the individual who's in a wheelchair. With this Zip Stop in this trolley, it will actually start to slow down on its own, using some principles of gravity to slow them down to the lowest point in the cable, but it will actually bring them right to a stop where they could go directly into a wheelchair, be unclipped. We take the trolley off of the zip line, and then it goes back around and is brought back up to a staff member to be clipped on for the next individual. So there's no more ladders or anything to be taking people off of zip lines where you risk a high fall of 6, 8, 10 feet. An individual who is able to walk will be able to walk right to a stop and then be unclipped. unclipped.
And I just thought of one other thing. There's several structures right at the, and I don't know what they are, because I kind of looked at them from a distance, right at the, in the area of the landing. Are those picnic table pads or tent pads or what? And are those still going to be there? There looks like there's a couple of them right there where you land.
Sure. These five buildings are actually lean-tos, and so that is the area where all of our children have a home base somewhere in camp where they set their backpacks down for the day, that have their swimsuits, any of those types of things within them. They'll set them down at that point and then begin their camp day traveling all throughout the acreage of camp. It's also a place, if there's a quick rain or something like that, they may duck undercover. But at that point, we wouldn't be using the zip line either. We're not going to use it in challenging weather situations at all.
All right. That's it for me.
Anyone on the board? Anyone in the audience?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
This session of the Penfield Planning Board is closed. Thank you.